Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Township Board Trustees Business Meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a relatively short agenda this evening, but let's start with additions, deletions. Mr. Mike?
Well, an addition, I would like to add a motion to approve the hire of Bridge Engineers Manic Smith Group pursuant to their proposal dated March 22nd, including Task Number One and Number Two.
Is there any discussion on that? I mean, we just got, we just came out of a study session about that very topic. Is there any discussion?
No.
If not, we have a motion to add an action item for Bridge Engineer, and I'm cutting that down from what Mike said. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will be added as action item number three. Any other additions or deletions?
I've got a, I've got one, Jim, that... I would ask that we have a, just a, it's a quick discussion on a water leak detention system for the DPS. Detection, I should have said, not detention. They're not going to jail yet. I would just like, it'd only take about 10 minutes or so.
A discussion?
Yes, just a discussion item.
Okay.
If I may explain, then?
Yes, please.
Just because it's not only a hot topic right now, but apparently the DPS meeting for tomorrow night has been canceled. I was gonna go to that first, Jim, and just bring this up and see what they thought about it, but since we've had an issue on Grozil, and it is kind of a hot topic with the people, I thought I would just bring up or ask, right now, if we could look into, or Derek being the DPS manager also, that we could look into some type of detection system.
Could you please open the doors? Yeah. Yeah, well, just because I want people to know it's an open, not a closed, meeting. Thank you. Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. So, anyway, that's just why, because there's no DPS tomorrow night, and it being a hot topic with the public on the issue that occurred. So, I think that just to talk about a detection system for the DPS for water leaks, where people would be able to be notified, and it might, you know, help the headache of trying to correct that, or even help them with damage to their home if they're away, and, you know, so on and so forth, so I just thought I'd quit.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna defer to, because this is not something new. This has happened in the past, you know, where somebody's gotten a large bill or something because of water, which normally is gonna be on their side of the line, not our side. I just like to ask Derek.
Yeah, I have no problem discussing that, and kind of...
You're familiar enough with it?
Yeah, provide some education as to what we have, or what options might exist, so that's fine.
Other questions or comments on that?
I certainly think it's worth talking about at least, so I'd like to hear how it works.
Okay. Any other comment?
I agree as well. I think there are a lot of communities who wish to vote for it. Hopefully.
All right. With that, we have a question, an ask to add a discussion item on, I guess, prevention of water leaks, or detection of water leaks. All in favor of adding that discussion?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that discussion will come at discussion time. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Other additions, deletions? Hearing none, do we have?
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda as amended, adding action item number three, and a discussion item on leak detection will be added. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to our first public comment. Three minutes on agenda items only. Do we have anyone? Seeing none?
Kathy in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me? Yeah, it's an agenda item, yep. Please come forward.
Kathy Walker, 26051 Thorpe Court. I am so sorry to see your action item one, which is Tony Gray's retirement. He was a delight to work with, effective, efficient, and kind, and you don't often see that combination in an employee. And he was just a great guy, and I hope you turn it down, but I know you're gonna let him go again. Just a wonderful man, and it's, I'm sorry to see him go, and I don't know who can take his place. Thank you.
Tony certainly is a one of a kind. Thank you, Kathy.
Kevin Flavin, Park Lane, Grozil, Michigan. I wondered, last time the board had a meeting, they voted on a public budget, or on the township budget. Was that considered a budget hearing? And was it published in a newspaper? And when was it published, and in what newspaper? According to the Michigan Constitution, the budget is supposed to be available six days prior to the meeting where it is voted upon, and as far as I can tell, it doesn't appear that it was available six days prior to that. And that would seem to violate the law, and would have to ask the question if the budget actually was passed, since you didn't follow the law, Mr. Budney? Mr. Budney is not responding to the question.
This is comments, it's not questions, you should know that by now.
A budget hearing, was there a budget hearing held?
I'd be glad to answer that, give me a call tomorrow.
I'm not going to call you tomorrow, as you know, that's your answer to all of this. Again, as I say every meeting, and you should know, that there should be a budget hearing, there should, this is according to the law, and I didn't see any budget hearing listed. There should be an opportunity for the public to ask questions about the pub, about, or make their opinions known prior to the budget hearing, or actually, prior to passing the budget, and it doesn't appear to me that that was done. So, you are, it appears you are in violation of Michigan law, and I would like you to speak about that to the public. And if I have to call you tomorrow and ask that question, what good does that do to the public that wants to know whether you've passed a legitimate budget? And I don't think that you have. The, let's see. Frank Kelly, who is the very well-respected Attorney General, said, "It is in my opinion, therefore, that the law that was passed in 1963 requires that the proposed budget must be completed and be available for public inspection for a minimum period of at least six days prior to the date of the public hearing to be held on the proposed budget." I don't see that there was a public hearing advertised, and I think that I did not see a budget available for inspection prior to that, and I would like to know what you're going to do to make your budget comply with Michigan state law.
It has.
And who said that?
Mister, thank you for, thank you for your comments. Other comments? Without any other comments, we'll move to, oh, I'm sorry, Greg?
Greg Carmison, resident of Macomb County, taxpayer, homeowner on Grozil. I just wanted to follow up on Kathy Walker's comments. I had the opportunity to interact with Tony Gray over the years, and every time I dealt with him, he was outstanding public servant. Just a very friendly, decent guy, and if he didn't have the answer for you, he always promised to get it to you, and he did. And I just wanna emphasize, Kathy Walk, follow up on Kathy Walker's comments, that this is exactly the type of public servant that we want on Grozil, and he's gonna be sorely missed, and I hope whoever takes over his responsibilities will follow in his footsteps of serving the public very well, and in a very friendly manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Hile?
Bill Hile, I live on East River. I'd like to also offer my commendation of Tony. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
He helped me on several occasions, with advice or some help with some problems that I had. One item we worked on for over a year, but it meant a lot, and I just wanted to get on the bandwagon with us for passing out commendations. And I'm commending you for putting that bridge thing on the agenda as well. We can learn with that as we go, but we gotta get it started.
Thank you, Bill. I'll be short. Again, Tony, you did a great job. If you're watching out there, good luck to you, and thanks for your many years of service. Thanks, Bob. And he is. Tony, Tony always streams our meetings, so I know he's seeing this, and thank all of you for making those comments. I'm sure he appreciates it. Anyone else? Okay. All right, then we have a couple of presentations, and we'll start with, no offense, Ian, but the best one first. Doug, you wanna come up? Ken, and Officer Hurtado. Am I pronouncing that correctly? No.
Hurtado, thanks for giving us some time. He's one of our newest hires, and Ken and I wanna introduce him to the board, and to the township, and then give a brief background on him. Clerk O'Connor's gonna do the swearing-in, and Deputy Chief Powell's gonna conclude the brief thing, so. As I said, this is his first day on the job with Grozil Police Department. He is 26 years old. He's from, I'm trying not to get too many details, but he's from Downriver Community. His first job out of school was with Detroit Police Department. He graduated their academy, and he went on to the Second Precinct, and he worked, later after a little bit of time, he went into their Second Precinct Detective Bureau, and he turned into the, followed up into the 30th Series, which is a specialty unit. From there, he applied here, this is the only department he's applied with since his first job with Detroit. Through the whole process, and all the background investigations, and the testing we do, he waited patiently, that's where we're at today. He's bilingual, speak and write Spanish. Since, what his draw to Grozil was, he worked for a local business in 2014, so he's worked out here in the community, and he saw the community, and what he told me was, he wanted to work in this community, he saw it, and he waited, and that's where we're at today. So, that's a little bit of background on Luis Hurtado. So, he says his first day, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
And then Clerk O'Connor can swear him in. And then, yep.
I must admit, this is actually the favorite part of my job, and as you were going through the beginning of the meeting, you may have seen me scroll through our, this is our oath book, and you are in here, and Doug, I have a note here that I swore you in on the 23rd of January in 2001. So, there's some history here.
Go back to 92, you have...
Yep. I wasn't here in 92, but yes, you're in here, Ken, you are definitely in here. So, you're going to be becoming a part of Grozil history. So, our deputy clerk, Brian Frill, has done us the honor of already setting this up. So, when we're done with the oath, you'll sign here, and I'll sign here, and then the officers will, I don't know, did you bring the ice water keg in the...
The Gatorade?
Just with the badges. So, if you will, and I think your dad's trying to photograph this, so maybe we stand like this, and you raise your right hand to me, and he doesn't need to see me, so I will, so that, can you see him okay? All right. So, I do solemnly swear or affirm...
I do solemnly swear or affirm...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of this state...
And the Constitution of this state...
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Patrolman...
That I faithfully discharge the duty...
...of the Office of Patrolman...
Of the Office of Patrolman.
...in and for the township of Grozil.
In and for the township of Grozil.
Okay, county of Wayne...
County of Wayne.
State of Michigan...
State of Michigan.
...according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Now, you may kiss the chief, no. Congratulations.
Do you want him to sign? As he's doing that, I will simply state, he's gonna receive his Grozil Police Department badge. Let him know that this is a sign of trust, a symbol of trust, that we've established with the community, that we establish amongst your coworkers, and you establish with yourself. The chief and I will hold you to a high standard, and you have some lofty expectations that I hope you achieve.
And I will, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you all for this opportunity, I really appreciate it. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And now, it's that time. Okay, Anne, come on up. Maybe you can answer some of the questions that were asked.
Oh, I think they want to clear...
Oh, yep, no, go ahead. Do you guys want pictures, or you wanna do outside?
We're gonna go downstairs?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Is there wine and cheese?
Yeah. Because we'd be going.
We'd be going, yeah. Yeah, please go. Thank you for coming.
It's always amazing how places fall, and then you get through one little thing, and all of a sudden, you're alone again.
Yep. All right, here we are for the township budget. I'm sorry I was on vacation, so I wasn't here to present the budget, but budgets were done, they were all available, they were online. What was required to be done, as far as what is required to be approved by the board, was in their packets, was on the portal, was available. There were copies downstairs, no one came and got them, so everything was done ahead of time that is normally done every year after year that I've been here. So, with that being said...
So, are our program for distributing the knowledge of the budget to the citizens is to print copies and put them downstairs? That's our typical?
The port...
And on the Grozil website?
Yes, it was all over, it was... It was adapted. This is not required to be adopted by law.
Okay.
The front pages that I gave you were allowed to be adopted, but these were downstairs, available for pickup, prior to me going on vacation, prior to me putting it on the portal. So, they were down there.
For the public, though?
Absolutely. All they had to do was come in and ask. A phone call was not made, email was not made on my phone, the girls were asked if anyone came and got one, and not one person did. So, they were available.
I think we need, in the future, then, to do a better job of letting the public know that they can review the budget. I didn't even know that, and I'm on the township board. I didn't know I could come get a budget at Township Hall.
Things are a little different, because everything is no more documents. It's all on the portal. As soon as I got home, as soon as I got back, I put it all on...
Sure, I review it on the portal digitally, but how does a resident review?
The portal? The same way?
So, they log into the portal?
It was available, absolutely.
And they have to have a username and password?
Nope. Nope. It's available to them, so.
I might just add, since we already know I've been here a really long time, 20 years ago, we used to print out boxes of those, and every year, we recycled boxes of those, and we did, and those were days pre-digital, and we would put advertising out. We've always done what we needed to do to get the message out, not to mention the fact we talked about it prior to the meeting. So, it is, it is, in essence, a very important document, unfortunately not a well-sought-after document, but I also don't know if we can go back into the data to find out how many people accessed that link.
There were, I think we made 20, and I think there were 18 there.
No, I mean, who went on...
You mean on the portal?
Who went to the portal? Oh, yeah, I don't know about the portal.
When you say portal, are you talking about grozil.com? Or are you talking about the civic web portal?
No, the, well, which is Grozil, yeah. That's how everyone finds their information.
Okay.
There's a lot available on that portal beyond what we access as logins, so all our information is on...
And as soon as I was back, there was a line item on that, on that portal. So, I can only do so much. I was on vacation, I'm sorry, I was on vacation, I hadn't done that in 27 years, it was planned, I didn't know when the meeting was gonna be. No one asked any questions after we had our study session, so I assumed everything was okay. Not one person called and asked me a question, so I would assume it was okay to go on vacation, or reschedule it, if it was such an issue, but it really wasn't, so.
I got a question. Has anything, I'm assuming this is the latest, greatest?
That was the prettiest one after, nothing changed.
Nothing changed since the time?
Not one dime, no, it just made it prettier.
Because, you know, in all fairness, historically, I've been to probably three or four of these, always picked up the book.
They were there.
Always picked them up, so, sort of like, them not being there, we're sort of like, we're gonna approve the budget.
That was me being on vacation, seriously, they were there.
Well, I mean, no, they were here, you know, like, in this room. I mean, it was a little bit of a change, just to be honest, okay?
But I didn't tell someone to pick them up, and do that, that was probably my fault.
I mean, we're not personally criticizing you, Anne.
No, 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 it's available. Yeah.
Systemically, I guess, even as a board member, I didn't know that I could come to Township Hall and get a copy of the budget six days ahead of time. Now, I know that I could view one through the portal with a login, but maybe in the future, we could inform the public, like, hey, there's this document online, and it's how we're spending your tax dollars, you know? So, that's all I'm saying.
Been doing it the same for 27 years, I'm honest, being honest with you, so it hasn't really been an issue till this year, to be honest, so. Okay, so, let's talk about the budget, that's why we're here. Basically, our budget is developed between, how our budget gets started is based on taxable value and the amount of millages, right? So, those two numbers are where we start our budget. So, if we look at our taxable value, we know with that big decline in 2008, 2009, so in 2008, we were up at 680, and you're gonna kind of understand where we're getting at and what's been going on. So, in 2008, our taxable value was at 680. Finally, finally, with Proposal A, and what had happened, and that big decline, it took us 12 years to get us back to where we were. And during that 12 years, we did not raise anyone's taxes, because the taxable value times the millage gives me my total revenue for the township, all driven by the public, all driven by the state of Michigan, nothing to do with the township or... Nothing to do with the township or, we can't raise taxes without a vote of the people. And in those years, so you can see, we are basically operating, now, think of your household. We know what, we know where we're operating now, right? We are still getting in the two thousand eight monies and now it's two thousand twenty-two. So that's where we've come and that, that's where we are today. So if you take, again, taxable value times the millages, that's where we're at. And you can see our millages after, actually have been declining. That we're assessing to the taxpayer. And we know millages are made up of general fund, police, fire. All the funds, the taxes that are attributed to those certain areas go to those certain areas. And when we did the budget, we'll look a little bit more and then I'll talk about the budget. But, so if you look at it, we had five point six, the red is all the debt that's out there and we'll talk about the debt as well, and the bottom part are the operations. So you can see our millages haven't really been moving since two thousand fourteen till two thousand twenty-one. So when we prepare the other budgets, we're going to take a lot of time and spend general fund because general fund is our discretionary fund. And as we went through all the other budgets, they were in balance. They didn't need any money from the general fund to operate. They all were self-sustaining. So obviously, the general fund always becomes the big issue because all the other ones are very self-sustaining. So in general, now we're talking about total government. We're looking at, when we talk about, first, we talk about where our money's coming from, right? So most of it is, is from taxes. Then we talk about people, right? People is our biggest thing. Why? Because we are a service. We provide people. So we always have to talk about people. So people are our next big step. So what we do is we start together, well, how many people do we have? How much staffing do we have? How much staffing do we need? All that type of thing. So when we look at the bottom line, the current full-time staffing, when you go to the first area right down here, this is total people on healthcare. So our current people on healthcare are sixty-eight and that's including the volunteer firemen. Our current retired on healthcare are forty-eight. So we have a hundred and sixteen lives on healthcare. And then we got to remember when someone retires with full benefits, not only do we have that person on healthcare, but we have to hire a new person and now we have a new person on healthcare. So it, it, it kind of shifts. And then for MERS, which is our pension, which is our other big expense other than healthcare, we have forty-five current employees on our MERS pension, sixty retired and for a hundred and five. We always want to look at, you know, what are our salary increases? What, what have they been? So what I do is a little comparison for non-union, union, non-union, which would be the general union, which would be our PO, our, our administrat, administrative and maintenance workers and then obviously the POAM are our police officers. So if we look at their raises over the twenty years in general, the non-union are about one point six one. The union is about one point eight eight and the police is at one point seven six. If you notice in last year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we did estimate at this point because they're going into a negotiation. So we didn't want to have anything in that line under because we don't want to show our cars, right? So we just left that blank. So that's why that's a little lower. And then the average, we know consumer price index has only been one point seven eight. So people are not even, they're right around inflation, none anymore, none any less. Then we look at employee township cost. Obviously, this is our main area of concern, right? Because we, we need people to run the township. So if you look at the gross wages in the green, so you can see, we're like three-five, three-four, three-five, three, so it kind of pretty much stays the same because like you said, you're getting rid of people, you're hiring people in at lower ages. Some of the wages are contained payouts when people leave, their bank times that we have to pay them for. So in general, salaries are kind of remaining stable. If we look at the healthcare, healthcare was going up for a little bit and then we put into place the hard cap. So we kind of controlled our, our healthcare costs, but obviously, again, the healthcare costs are growing up. Why? We're having a lot of retirees. We still have to maintain health costs for them and then we have to add more employees on. So it's more, health cost is only going up. The last health costs, we are, by a hard cap, the state of Michigan tells us what that hard cap is, is what we can pay for every employee. The employees now take on the difference of what our cost is costing the township to, what the state allows. So the last inflation that the state gave for, for healthcare and the same as everyone else sees across, across the country, it was a three point seven percent increase. So that's a true cost inflation to the township, but the other costs is associated with new hires, old hires. And so you can see that raising. And right now, everyone's probably asking, what is our healthcare unfunded liability? Because I know that's a big issue. It's a little over twelve mil, twelve million three hundred. The average amortization period for that is about twenty-seven years. So we built in a funding trust and we are taking care of that and it is actually helping out the situation.
As far as the state's concerned, we're, we're fine.
As far as healthcare, we are fine. We're doing what we need to be doing. They're, they're fine with what we were, what we have been doing. As you can see, it's kind of stabilizing out, so and, and they, they see that. Now we're going to talk about MERS. MERS is obviously the retirement system. As you can see, it has been going up. If we look at our unfunded for MERS is about six, a little over sixteen million. What has happened now is we're in eighteen-year unfunded, we're at an amortization left of eighteen years for unfunded liability. So what has happened, it has taken our thirty-year mortgage and that's why these costs are going up because it's taken our thirty-year mortgage and it's shrinking our, it's shrinking the time period. So now our thirty-year mortgage becomes an eighteen-year mortgage and which, and if we did that with your car loan or if we did that to your house loan, obviously, your annual payments are going up. So our annual payments are going up and we're going to see that more later as we get into this, this presentation. So we are actually, whatever MERS tells us to pay, we are by law required to pay that amount and we do that. That's, that's what we are allowed by state. We have to make our payments for our MERS and we, and we are. So just keep that in mind, but that's why our MERS keeps going up is because of the shrinkage and the, of the timeframe that we're allowed to pay our unfunded.
And that timeframe is going down to fifteen years.
Fifteen, so we're getting there.
We're going to continue with this increasing cost over the next couple of years because it's going down to fifteen.
Yep, yep. So the next one, the next one is our long-term debt. So in total, for the whole township, we have about twenty-four million dollars, which an annual payment of about four point four million dollars. But we've come a long way because I've watched these go down, so I'm so excited. So the original six eighty-five, that's the only thing you got benefit when you got time on your hands. So the six eighty-five originally started at like two point five million. The, the tax sewer system, which is down to five million, had originally started at forty million. So I may see those come off in my time, which I'm pretty excited about those. The fourteen-five, the fourteen, fifteen million started at a little over twenty million. Those are for the water mains and sewer mains. So those, we've gotten some more, so that's, as soon as we paid some off, we've gotten more. So that hasn't gone down as much. The judgment bond is now at two-six. It started at six-eight. So they are going down. So just to let you know how they are starting to go down a little bit. All right, so that was told, like general, like total township-wide. And that's, if you look at all, like I said, again, the other budgets, they are self-supporting, supporting themselves. They're not taking anything from general fund. They're doing fine on their own. Airport's fine, DPW's fine, they're covering their bases, they're collecting fees as necessary. So our big concern, obviously, is always general fund because it's our discretionary fund, right? So within our general fund, this year we are, they approved a budget of a little over six point five million dollars, of which three point nine is property taxes and we'll get into that. Interest income, not much. State shared revenue is a little over a million dollars right now, so that's good. It's actually been going up. And then license and permits is, and then the, is more the billing department than you have other revenue and fees. So we'll go into that more, but that's just a general category of how our revenue is generated. So here is kind of a, a scenario of general fund versus, versus the police department. So if you look at the purple, that is our total revenue that, every year that we've collected. If you look at the next one, property taxes are in red. So those are the property taxes. And I'll show you a schedule and then if you look at the police department expenditures, you see how they're taking our property taxes. And we're talking property taxes of every dollar that goes in the general fund, whether it's our general fund, our allocated millage or three separate police millages. So the red is our total property taxes and the blue is how much we are giving the police department of those tax dollars that come into the township. Yep, here's the, here, look at this right here. So if I look over the last four years, this is actual eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one are actual revenues and then the last twenty-two are budgeted. So when we look at tax dollars, it went three-five, three-six, three-seven, three-eight, three-nine, seven-three. Of which, here we go to the tax. So the amount of expenditures, actual, that the police department had, did, it was three-five. So they got a hundred percent that year of the taxes. In nineteen-twenty, they got ninety-four percent of the taxes. These are actual numbers. In twenty-one, they got ninety-six percent of the taxes. In twenty-one, twenty-two, budgeted, they got ninety-seven percent of the taxes. And the twenty-two, twenty-three year, they got a hundred percent of every tax dollar that comes into this township.
That's total general fund revenue, or I'm sorry, total general fund taxes.
Yes, so here's our general.
Not just police millage.
And that's general fund allocated, general fund voted, police, police, police. So when people are talking about defunding the police department, that is so untrue when you look at the actual figures. So that's, that's where the numbers come from. And to be, if we go into this further, if we look at the tax revenue that was generated in twenty-one, twenty-two or twenty-two, twenty-three, that's an additional a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of taxes that we got based on our millages times our taxable value was a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and four, twenty-four thousand dollars. Police department got an additional to fund their department, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, of which the pension increased a hundred and forty thousand and the, and the police health increased forty-seven thousand. So when, if, if people are seeing the generality, if my taxes only go up a hundred and twenty-four thousand and the police, those two expenditures go up a hundred and eighty-seven, the township needs money to operate. And so we're getting it from general fund and just miscellaneous, miscellaneous items. We actually balance this budget, you're going to say, well, where did the money come from? We actually balance this budget with, we're going to start selling township property. That is township, not open space, but township property to make the budget work right now. Because that, it's a, it's a one-year fixed, so, but this is how close the numbers are. This is how tight this budget is. So when we talk about police personnel, there, yeah, there's been twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-three. Now we're at twenty-two and twenty-two. So there is no room to breathe. We are making ends meet. As far as general fund is concerned. Does anyone have any questions about the revenue and? Are we good? Okay, so we're going to talk about general fund uses. So obviously, we kind of looked into that. As far as other departments, like I said, we do need the treasurer, we need the clerk, we need administration, we need supervisor, we need township board, communicate, the communications, community development. Those all make up the rev, the expenditures in the general fund, of which the police is four million dollars out of a six point five million dollar budget. Any questions? Nope, that's all. Do you have any questions?
No, I, I, it's not really a question. It's an observation that again, because we are, and, and Tom, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but because we are general law township, the actual departments that we are required to have are clerk, treasurer, supervisor, administration. We are not required to have a police department. But the community chooses and the board supports those choices. We have a professional police department and we dedicate the majority of our general fund budget to that department. But legally, we still have to have the other departments. Those are the ones that we are obligated to have. So I'm not saying we don't, we, that we don't want to have a police department, but we have chosen for this community that we want to have our own dedicated police department and, and that is the cost to the community of running that department.
Oh, then this one, I think Joe had asked me before about fund balance. So over the last couple of years, this is just obviously a summary. Over the last couple of years, you know, audits are available that show these exact numbers and everything you ever want to know. Sometimes we talk too much about the budget, which is a budgeting tool and not the actual audit, which is the actual outcome, right? We can budget, we try to, you can see later that we try to budget as close to actual as we can, obviously. So, so if we look at the last couple of years, remember when I said, general fund is just hanging on and we are. Like since two thousand eighteen, we, we were to the good twenty-four thousand, then to the good of fifteen thousand, then to the good of twelve, then to the good of sixty-seven. This year's budget, twenty, did I do that wrong? Yeah, no, twenty-one, twenty-two, that we just finished as a budget. I'm projecting about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit to general fund this year based on all the retirements that happened, better than I predicted, but that's my estimate coming into this year. So it'll be a negative two fifty is what, is, is where I'm at for right now until the audit is complete. And then, so our fund balance is at two fifty, which is getting down to like thirty-three percent, you know, of, of expenditures for a current year. So state recommends twenty-five percent to be in financial good condition. You can see that we're going to start going into fund balance. Just because of the, the cost of, of personnel. So again, here's just our chart of general fund. So here's the, the blue is the revenues or the purple is the revenues. Only if we look at general fund history, which is kind of amazing to me, in total, over the last twenty years, the general fund budget has averages one point nine four percent. That's pretty good. I think your household probably went up more than one point nine four percent in total. So especially in groceries in the last week, so I'm sure of it. So anyway, so, yep, yep, one or two. Okay. And the last one is, because you always wonder, how, how do we budget? Are we just like daydreamers, just trying to, to, you know, make our budgets as prettier as whatever? And actually, we don't. I mean, in the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, there were circumstances that happened that we don't budget for. I'm not one to be changing budget all the time. My budget is my, is, is a township tool. That's all it is, is a tool to see where you're at based on your budget, right? So if you look at it over the years, we pretty much budget to actual at the end of the day. Our some over, some, and that's why we're saying we don't approve that line item budget. We be adjusting it all the time. So by law, you're allowed, you're supposed to adopt a cost center budget and that was what was provided to the board, was a cost center budget and that with fund balance. And that's what was given to the board. That's what we're required to do. We don't do the line item thing. So we do that for a reason, so that we know if the cost center goes over, then we need to look. But if supplies or this doesn't go, that, we don't, we, we would be constantly adopting budgets. So in, in general fund, you can see that it's very, our budget is pretty much to actual, so.
Got your question. Where, where, do we?
Where, do we have a slide, maybe you showed and I just missed it, but one that shows our annual bank account cash?
Yeah, there it is, right here. It's just one. This is your bank account. Your fund balance is your bank account. Yep. And you, you need, you know, we only get paid one day a year. So you have to have enough fund balance in your bank account to last you a year.
So the March, so the March 31st?
The 22 is what we just completed. I'm guessing we're going to be about 250 in the whole.
Does that, does that include like that COVID money, for example, we got?
Oh, absolutely not, no. That's just general fund, doesn't include anything.
Okay, so where would that go?
That's in an escrow fund right now until we determine what that's going to be used for. We used a, we used a couple, we did, in this year's budget, we reimbursed the police department for $23,000 of overtime and we used 67,000 for the fire department. That's it. The rest is there.
The question I have is, you have these dedicated millages that you can only use for that purpose. The COVID money, I wouldn't refer to that as a dedicated millage. So do we have a slide that shows everything in the general fund and all of our cash that's not dedicated, associated with a dedicated millage?
General fund is your only discretionary fund in the entire township that you can do what you want with.
But for example, COVID money?
That's right. COVID, we just have it sitting in escrow. We haven't assigned that to anywhere. We're not going to inflate fund balance with the COVID money because we haven't, you haven't, as a board, decided what you're going to do.
As a board member, I'm just interested to know how much money we have that's not dedicated to, you know.
Something that's out there. And Mike, Mike's just asking, what's the actual total?
Because for example, if we needed money in the police department or we needed it in the fire department, we could go to the COVID money. Well, I don't know.
We did, we did give them some for, was realistic, yes.
You could do that. You, there's a lot of things you can use it for. And my whole purpose is, it's not dedicated to one thing, right?
Oh, you guys haven't dedicated it to anything.
So money.
And you got to remember, it's a one-year fixed. It's not a solution.
So what?
It could be, it could be a two-month fix.
Some stuff is, yes, yes. And that's, that's the discussion.
It would be interesting to know, it would be very interesting to know what our total cash balance is from year to year of those funds that are not, you know, exclusively dedicated to one thing.
Well.
That's, that's it, except for, except for this, except for this year, which, I mean, what's not showing here is that COVID money right now.
So there's more money out there we can't see in this budget. So as board members, how do we deliberate on the expenditure of it without being able to see it? Okay.
This is a summary. I could not spend about 100 pages. That's what we talked about at our study session.
Every one of those budgets, they're all in here, where money comes in, where money goes out.
There's also the treasurer's.
The treasurer's report has it every day. Right now, you want to know our balance? Probably is about zero because we're at our end of the year and then we fill up our buckets. So cash is a one-day thing. There it is. That's, that's how we measure, really, it's on one day, just like our pension is measured one day of the year. Or, or one day of the year, because that changes daily. That changes daily. But. Yep.
One thing, can you just clarify, since obviously I'm new to seeing when we get our money in, our different monies, if you will? You said that we get paid only once a year. If we collect taxes twice a year and they're state shared revenue.
Well, we, I mean, I'm being facetious. We get tax dollars, our one day, yeah. Our state share revenue comes in every two months. I mean.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, oh, yeah, no. Our DPW money comes in every day, right? The cashiers, I'm saying cashiers.
When do we get our collection for our taxes then?
December 1st, really, is when they're due or the, yeah.
For both?
Only the, in the summer, only the debts call, only the debt is collected in the, in the summer. The winter is everything else.
You don't count that?
So December 31st, I'm rich. I'm rich for a day. And then I start, I, that's, but I've already kind of spent it during the time. It's, it's just a fine battle. You get a payday one, you're going to have to budget it to make sure that it lasts. That's why you want family else, you need money to work with. So, because you only get paid that one day. It's just the dynamics of the.
The, you're saying that the summer taxes pay money we've already spent.
It's a debt.
We only get debt money only.
We get debt collection money in the summer.
I mean, I pay a summer tax, it's not a debt.
No, no, it's those for a summer.
Go look, it's all schools in Wayne County. It's only one debt fund. Look at your tax bills and you'll understand that, the one day you pay me.
Operating, okay.
Yeah, that one day you get, give me my money is the only day you pay me, right? And you only pay me twice a year, once for my debt and once for all my other stuff. So that's the way we, you know, that's a treasurer's gift.
The state shared revenue is only every two months then? So you have to wait till the end of the year to see the total you got?
Yeah, because you got to close out taxes. No, I, we start distributing.
You can project, I mean, you kind of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you have an idea. With that, the, the state lets you know, kind of.
Oh, yeah, yeah. My budget tells me how much I'm getting.
Probably will be, it's kind of a probably from the state because they can change it whenever they want.
Right, like I said, and we get, we get, but general fund really gets nothing, really. It gets its community development and that's really kind of it. So we just got to keep your fund balance in so you can pull down on it and then get paid. So that's why it's a one-day thing, just like your checkbook is a one-day thing, right? How much money do you have at December 31st? When the tax, when your tax accountant says, how much money did you have? Right, it's one day.
It's another month.
So, Anne, another question.
Yeah.
Another question. Is this like what we're looking at right now totally on a cash basis or is it accrual?
General fund is modified accrual. And then your DPW is total accrual. Your airport is total accrual.
And so.
I mean, cash is cash, right? I mean, that's.
What, what is our, our bad debt, Dave, do you know on?
But there is none. The county pays us almost 100%. It's revolving through the county. Yes, for our delinquents, yes.
There was a proposal.
A number of years eliminate that, but they kind of backed off of that.
Right, they backed off. So the county pays us in full and then the county collects. All right, good.
Good, other questions?
All right, and don't hesitate to come talk to me. I'm there every day, that's what I get paid to do.
Anne, I have a question.
Yep.
Anne, I have a question. On Facebook, there was a posting after our last meeting that we were defunding the police. Your figure is, is that we have increased that by over $200,000, $235,000 this year?
That is correct.
You've been doing this, I think you said, for 27 years?
That is correct.
Are we doing anything differently with funding the police than what we've done for the last 27 years?
Absolutely not.
So then that posting would be incorrect or misleading or flat out erroneous?
Correct.
Any reason to believe that we're going to have to take any actions next year? You don't have an ability to predict that?
No.
Well, here, let me follow up on that because I'm sure that was meant for me.
No, no, not at all.
Because it's in Facebook.
You didn't make the posting.
Let's, I didn't, you're right.
No, you didn't make the posting.
But last year, for example, we had $123,000 savings because we didn't hire a chief. 23K for turnover savings on a deputy chief, 28K for dispatcher clerk, 72K for certified officer. Every organization, including government, saves a lot of money. That's money that was never paid.
Oh, well, when I paid out 180,000, those people left. Where did that money come from?
Oh, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Right, that's, that's why I'm telling you what the total number is.
246,000, probably another 100,000 for benefits that I didn't add to that number.
You're right. So that's, just come in, we can show you everything. I can show you every dime of how it all worked out.
You know, you could make the argument, and quite frankly, we took out 80,000 in last year's budget for salaries. It may not be defunding the total package, but you know, there's such a thing as inflation, right? And that's why budgets go up every year. So the manpower, people power that we have, we had reductions. It was 80,000 in last year's budget, 20 in this year, so.
You're no different than any community in this entire state of Michigan.
Somebody would refer to that accurately as defunding the staff, right? So I think you can make that point.
Those are strong words, I guess.
I'm not.
That's, yeah, yeah. Those are strong words.
It's a head, it's a head. And by the way, just in the last, I think, 10 years, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but our calls have gone up 37%. And I for one campaigned on, you know, a slate of providing outstanding, you know, public safety. And when your calls go up 37%, unfortunately, this, you can't say, go to your website and get a police officer, right? You need somebody showing up at the door. So I'm not criticizing, but I'm just saying, let's kind of be transparent here.
I have the numbers, they're here every day. So anyone who wants them, anyone who wants numbers can come, come and ask.
We made some cuts and people are dealing with it. But let's just be transparent.
We've effectively reduced the capability of the police department while increasing their budget.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's really, you can say, well, you know, they run a little overtime and maybe the chargers are a heck of a lot faster than Capri's Classic. So they get to calls faster and we preposition them a little bit so they hit one end of the island and the other. But the end of the day, there's one less certified police officer, actually, two less certified police officers on the department than there was five or six years ago. So, I mean.
To that end, we could also say that if you look at our administrative staff, we have one staff person doing sometimes the job of two to three different positions. And we've had to spread the positions out so that they, that they don't interfere with each other, especially in the finance department. So I think 15 years ago, that was called right sizing, right?
Yeah, I think we are down 18 people across.
So we've been, we've been having to do that throughout the township, not just the police department, but throughout the entire administrative structure of the township.
You know, I totally agree with you, but there's a lot, it's a lot easier, easier to realize efficiencies in administration departments. It's been my experience in 30 years running large shops. That is in areas where it's based on human people power, you know, being there physically. So let's, I, I understand that's great that you've been able to do that and that would be an expectation in any operation, I would say. But when it's, when it's, when it's hands-on, people knocking on doors, responding to calls, we're talking about two different things. So let's be real about that, too.
Well, I think we, we have continued to be one of the safest communities. We, I don't know where we've slipped.
But no, I don't know.
Almost in spite of ourselves that we continue to be one of them.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I think it's a money issue.
There's different views on that.
It's a money issue, obviously, and that's up to you, board, to decide how to figure it out. And that's, that's kind of where it ends, I guess.
One, one observation I would like, I would like to make. Greg Carmazin was kind enough to put a graph up on Facebook indicating general calls for service. The service peak, the calls for service peak appeared to be 13,830. And the last year that, from what I can read on this, Greg, we were at 10,800. So that was a significant reduction from where we were. And as Jim's point is, we're still the safest, one of the safest communities in the country and certainly the safest or near safest in Michigan. And I thank you for posting that there so we can compare apples with oranges and apples with apples. Well, but again, you look at what you do with that time, what we do with the time when we're not investigating crime. We had a citizen come up before and say, we're, you know, very, very blessed that the women in the community feel very safe. And I think we all feel very safe. So I look at the numbers and as Mark Twain used to say, there's lies, damn lies, and statistics. And I commend you for putting that graph out there because it shows that we do go up and down. Applying the metrics, I suppose we should have hired an officer when we're up at 13,830.
Hold on, are you a statistician?
Carl, Carl.
Alls I could say is, if a statistician looked at that trend and normalized it, okay, your argument would be blown away, all right?
First of all, first of all, we're getting, Mike, we're getting off, and Carl, we're getting off, off track here.
Don't consider the anomaly, all right?
Anne, do you have anything?
I don't, so if anyone, if anyone wants a budget, they will be downstairs. We probably ran out because I think the managers stole a lot of them. But if you guys need them printed, we'd be more than happy to print them. Like I said, they are on the website on my finance department as far as a line item budget. And if anyone ever has questions, I'm more than available. And I just want to thank all the managers, all the time they put in as well as.
Hey, Anne, would you email me the link to the digital budget?
Sure.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. Mr. Nadeau?
Thank you. Make a motion to approve consent agenda 22-001. To approve it, which consists of the following items. Minutes of the March 28th, 2022 regular meeting. Check registers dated through April 1st, 2022. An appointment to the Community Recreation Commission. And an appointment to the Township Board of Review.
Support?
Yes.
Oh, you didn't have a call on me, I guess I just called. Support.
Okay, any, any questions on the consent agenda?
Well, I would just like to point out again that Kevin Naso is being recommended for the Community Recreation Commission. And former Fire Chief Duncan Murdoch is being recommended for the Board of Review. And I want to thank both those individuals for getting involved.
Thank you. I just had one question.
Yes, Mike.
I think it's on page one. We had of the check register, we had a taxidermy charge for $400. I mean, I just saw that as kind of odd as I go through there. You got it, dear girl.
Saw that.
It's on page one.
I saw that.
I mean, is that something that I just?
Reimbursement.
Right here.
It was a reimbursement for the animal shelter. And it was out of, it was out of the animal shelter fund, out of the donated funds.
So to a tax, to a taxidermy, I'm not sure I'm following, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I might, I don't have.
Anne, can you come up and just explain it?
What did it pay for? What did it pay for?
I guess he's asking, what did it?
I, don't quote me. I think it was either a coyote that someone wanted, that someone wanted to put up there and they donated half and she half. And there was a coyote that's hanging in the animal shelter. And she. And she processed it with her donations, not with tax dollar money.
Not with tax dollar money.
No taxes for taxidermy.
I, I'm sorry, I look at those things, unfortunately, that one pops.
It's a campaign motto right there. Taxes for taxidermy.
Thank you.
All right, other, other questions or comments?
Well, just, well, I was going to say, if you, if you look at those documents, you do find that there are a lot of times that the, that the township accounts are used for operating funds going in and out for other, other accounts. And so there'll be, you know, there'll be escrow accounts and so forth. And it all has to be documented somewhere. So it does end up on our, on our paperwork. And, and that is transparency. So you do get to see even the taxidermy donation, so to speak, is documented in our, in our papers.
Anything, okay, anything else? All right, hearing nothing. We have a motion to approve consent agenda 22-001, which is made up of the minutes of the March 28th regular meeting. The check register and invoices dated through April 1st, 2022. Community Rec Commission appointment and a Township Board of Review appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, our consent agenda passes. Thank you. All right, action items. David, if you would, please.
I'd like to make a motion that the Grozil Township Board approve and accept the retirement of Anthony Gray, Grozil Township Ordinance/ Zoning Officer, based upon the terms and conditions.
condit, conditions listed in the attached retirement agreement.
Second?
I was hoping we weren't going to get a second on that one and keep it away, but I guess we did.
And I jumped so quickly. I'm sorry. Sorry, Tony.
Any, any comments on that? Tony's, Tony is, is retiring.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know Tony real well. I worked with him a little bit on the ordinance reviews I've been doing. I will tell you this, though. He absolutely stuck a, like, warning ticket on my door. So anybody that says Tony wasn't like a man of integrity with fair enforcement was, I was like, "All right, man. Fair enough. You got me." So, so I appreciate his dedicated and honorable service, so.
Thank, thank you, Jamison. Nice words.
Jamison, so you don't feel alone. My first contact with Tony Gray came from a letter about a sign I'd put out on the grass there for rent, for a rental that we had at the time. And I got a nice, sharp, crisp letter from Tony Gray saying, "Don't do it again, or..." And since then, I have done some survey work and some other work on Groseal for various clients. And I found Tony to be very responsible. I could call him. And I remember he called me on a weekend one time, just to follow up on a phone call I'd made earlier. So Tony did not stop necessarily at Friday night at 5 o'clock. He had a great conscience. And when I asked him about materials, this was years and years ago. It wasn't because I came on board the board. Back then, I didn't know him except by name and voice. And he has just been absolutely an asset to Groseal. It's going to be hard shoes to follow. But Jamison, I don't want you to feel like you're alone out there.
Yeah, the only criminal in the, on the board today.
Well, on, on top of all that, Tony also had a great, has had a great sense of humor. And he always liked to joke that he tried to Barney Fife people into submission. And it was a skill that worked really well. Again, because we're general law, if someone is not willing to sign the complaint, there's very little that Tony can do. But he would work with people. He would cajole people. And he, like he said, he would Barney Fife them into submission. But my favorite story about Tony, and I won't be at his retirement party to share it, is many years ago, my son was little, and he was a big fan of a show called Bob the Builder. And like many little boys, I've heard stories from many mothers since. Kiernan was fascinated with flushing stuff down the toilet. The kid was just enamored. And quite a few things went down. But we had a plug, and my husband had to call in the plumber. And, but before the plumber could get there, Kiernan thought he could fix the situation. Tony found out about it, because he was there when the plumber pulled a little Bob the Builder out of our toilet, way, stuck way down there. And he thought that was very funny. And a couple of days later, on my desk here at Township Hall, there was a citation for Bob the Builder doing plumbing without a permit. And so that's always been a dear story. And, and Kiernan actually has that citation in one of his albums. He just, he just thought that was the cat's pajamas, so.
Do you still have Bob, Bob the Builder a little?
No, that Bob the Builder was sanitized. And, yeah, but again, you know, Tony approaches, approached his job and continues to approach his job with a lot of what I like to say, class and humor. So I'm going to miss him a lot.
Other comments?
Oh, yeah.
Joe?
If nobody else, I just want to say thank you for all your years, Tony, of service and everything you've done here. And I guess we, you still can't ignore that, you know, he was the catalyst to, I'm not sure what the total amount will be with this house, but if it wasn't for Tony, talking to the young lady, well, woman, young lady, we would not have gotten that house donated to the animal shelter. And I think that, you know, no offense to the coyote, I think we ought to put a picture of Tony up there, you know?
We're back to the taxidermy, aren't we?
Yeah. So anyway, Tony, I hope you have a happy and healthy retirement. The best to you. I'm sure we'll see you around. And just thank you for everything. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, Joe and I have known Tony and Tony's family for a long time. I too would add, Tony, all the best to you and to Sharon. I, I certainly hope you enjoy your retirement and have, have some fun. We will miss you around here, absolutely. Anyone else? Not seeing or hearing any? We have a, a motion before us that the township, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves and accepts the retirement of Anthony Gray, Groseal Township Ordinance Zoning Officer, based upon the terms and conditions listed in the attached retirement agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No, it's, it's unanimous. Tony, you can retire. Thank you.
I never meant...
And David?
Thank you again. I'd like to make a motion that the Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves payments for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 to the employees listed in the attached proposed non-union payments chart.
Second?
Okay. Derek, I'm going to ask you to, oh, you can come up or speak from there, what, what's going on here. It's, it's not for everyone, but in, in fact, everyone got something. So I'll let you explain it, Derek.
Yeah. Traditionally, the township has approved non-union wage adjustments at or around budget time. So this is a follow-up to our budget approval that we had at our last meeting. Because our management or non-union staff members aren't necessarily, their employment arrangements not designed with an employment agreement or a contract like our unions are, where there's stipulated wage increases based upon that negotiated contract, we address these annually about this time. In the proposed adjustments for this year, we've taken into consideration things like new hires or advancements to different positions or new positions. So you'll see in the chart that was attached, I think on page two of the action item, there are adjustments being made, but those adjustments are only being allocated to those employees that didn't either not have a, an adjustment associated with moving to a new position, were not a new hire, or didn't receive any kind of compensation or additional compensation to like an HSA account like we would have seen in the fire department. So really, it, it's five employees that would be receiving an adjustment for the upcoming year in the form of what we would term to be a bonus type payment. These payments would not be eligible for factoring into their overall compensation for terms or purposes of pension calculations. So there is some language that was included in the action item that referenced the type that these payments are. So the board is aware as to what classification these fall under. And these, for the residence information, they're payments of $2,000. For those payments that would be coming, for employees that are funded through the general fund, those were built into the budget that you approved. For those payments that will be coming out of like enterprise, or the employee works for an enterprise account, those budgets have the capacity to be able to had, go ahead and support that $2,000 payment. If a budget adjustment or amendment is necessary at the end of the fiscal year, if they're over by that amount, the board will end up having to do that or could do that. But for right now, I think they're, in talking to the finance director, there's flexibility within those budgets to support that payment. So are there any questions?
I, I have one.
I was just going to also point out, it's, this is, this amount is not rolled into base salary. So it's a, it's a, it's truly a one-time payment.
Is this incremental to a merit raise or salary increase for these people? So they didn't get it? They're getting this in lieu of that?
This, yeah. You know, last year, they didn't get anything. Last year, your first year on the board, they got nothing. This year, we wanted to give them something, but we're also in, in the process of wanting to look at all our, all our wages and salaries and make sure that they're, they're in line with what, what they should be and what we can afford.
I understand.
And that's why we didn't want to up the, the salary.
Derek, this was your recommendation? You generated this product?
Uh, yes, yes. Yep. And I have spoken with the management employees and non-union employees that aren't on here to receive an adjustment and explained the logic behind this, so they're all aware of, of, you know, what the proposal is this evening, and understand the reasoning behind it. And, and for the most part, the employees understood, especially those that are new to their positions, where their wages were just recently adjusted to accommodate their new, new role. So I think it, most employees are, were understanding of the proposal that you see tonight.
Other questions, comments? Hearing aren't none. We have a motion that the Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves payments for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 to the employees listed in the attached proposed non-union payments chart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The, that passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Action item number three. Michael?
Hey. I have a motion to approve for the bridge engineer firm, Manic Smith Group, pursuant to their proposal dated March 22 for tasks one and two, in an amount of $22,400.
Support?
Thank you. Any questions on that? We, like I say, we had a study session and went through it pretty thoroughly.
Would you mind, just for me and for the audience present, what are tasks one and two?
Mike, do you have?
Yeah, I do. Okay. Task three. Task one, information gathering. MSG will obtain available data regarding the bridge, including, including existing plans, rehabilitation plans, bridge safety inspection reports, structure inventory and appraisal form, and other relevant data. The majority of this information should be stored in MDOT's Bridge Database, MI Bridge. We anticipate working with both Wayne County and MDOT to obtain access to in-bridge and the information that is available. Other information may be obtained from Wayne County's records on file in their office. We have worked with several bridge staff at Wayne County that should be able to provide the information needed. Then task two basically goes on to say that we're going to evaluate all this information, and they'll provide us an opinion in general as to what type of condition and longevity the bridge has, is in and has before major repairs. And there's an option down the road for a third task, if we see fit, that we decided to hold off on, which be, would be include looking into grants and things like that. That's at a kind of a high level. Well...
Is that good?
Thank you.
Uda?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to thank Mike and Derek for their work they put into this. This wasn't something that was done in a moment or an hour. And I know there were a lot of, a lot of interest in having that done. And Derek and Mike, you went out and found people that could do this. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think most, majority of that was done by Derek, but I appreciate it. I'll take whatever I can get from your part.
Take your credit.
Okay. So we have a motion before us to contract with Manic Smith Bridge Engineer for, based on their proposal dated March 25, 2022, for tasks one and two. Of the three tasks in the, in the proposal, we're going for task one and two, with the ability to add task three down the road. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. We will proceed on that basis. Thank you. And that, that brings us to our reports.
How about the discussion?
Well, the discussion comes after the report.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
We didn't forget the discussion. All right.
I, I do have a quick question, since we're on the topic of bridges. Derek, Jim, will you be saying, obviously, the Free Press had an article in today's paper, or at least I read it today, that the state put out a report about bridges and investment in bridges. And in one of those reports was actually a map of bridges that are currently under weight restrictions, bridges that are closed, bridges that are open. And if you expanded the map, you could see on Groseal that we have one closed bridge, one, one open bridge, which is actually the bridge on, on Parkland at East River. And, and that the Township Parkway Bridge is actually still under weight restriction. So I was just curious, because that was part of phase one of the state's plan. So I'm wondering if you had any information on that, or at least could look into it for future.
I, I, I'm not familiar with the article.
My, my employer showed it to me this morning, and I was, I had to dig for it.
Was it, was it digital, or was it?
It was digital.
It was digital?
Yeah, it was digital. And you had to dig for it.
And most of it focused on, I think, a stretch of I-75 in Oakland County.
Wayne County as well, but...
I-94 project in Wayne County.
Miller Road project.
Something in home county as well.
It just, it was an interesting development. And if I can, I'll try to send that link to you. I'm not a subscriber, so I had to kind of dig for it.
Okay. Well, yeah. Okay, if you can find it, please do.
Yeah. So to start the clerk's report, we actually have a clerk's report today. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. It was the Detroit Free Press. Mm-hmm.
Check the news, though, too, because there was a similar article.
So the clerk's office actually is now beginning to start the seriousness of an election season. And to that end, we are looking to hire a part-time elections office staff position. It is in the budget. And it is critical to our staff being able to fulfill all of our various duties, preparing the polls, preparing the rolls, everything for the election. So the position that we are looking for is a part-time elections office staff. It is a position that is responsible for performing specialized duties, to assist with the logistical coordination of election workers, material, and equipment and preparations for the upcoming elections. This position, the person in this position helps test election equipment, process incoming voter registration forms, and other township clerk tasks that lead up to the election, and plural. The dates of this position will be approximately mid-May to mid-November of 2022. The position will work up to an average of 20 hours per week. The work schedule is flexible and will be coordinated between the employee and the elections administrator. And this position must be able to work on August 2, obviously Election Day, and November 8 of 2022. A full job description can be found on our township website. Please submit a cover letter, a resume, and an application to giclerk@groseal.com. If you have questions about it, you can also call the clerk's office. Brian and Elena will be able to field your questions. I believe that position is currently being held by Gail Hager. And she has done a wonderful job over the years, but it is a big job. And I think Gail is, in essence, looking to retire. And we definitely need to fill that position. So if you're interested, obviously, we'll train you, right? We'll... We'll feed you and we'll probably give you some good stories to take home at the end of the process. Uh, I am also the liaison to the Fire Commission, and I just wanted to make a brief statement that Chief Bowdre, Chairperson Bringard, and I are continuing to meet with each other, with Supervisor Budney and Township Manager Teal, to discuss our budget and budget concerns ongoing. And it's a two-way conversation, it's very productive, so we're looking forward to continuing. And then Chief Bowdre just informed me earlier today, as he does on board meeting nights, that year-to-date, we have had 158 rescues and 13 fire calls. I just want to, in essence, use my platform here tonight to make a short statement about mental health during these very challenging times. Keep an eye on your friends and family. Make sure they're doing well. Hug them often, let them know they are loved. And, uh, you know, be there for them if they need you. These are very difficult times, especially for our young people, and we really just need to be there for each other. This is a community. Thank you.
Thank you. David.
Thank you. For the month of March, Groseal Township had a total of $13,870,000 invested in various accounts. And these accounts generated interest income of $2,589,000 with an average interest rate of .125%. Unpaid 2021 property tax information has been sent to Wayne County. And in, in early June, Wayne County will start sending out tax due letters to any property owners who failed to pay their 2021 property taxes. Wayne County calculates the interest on the unpaid taxes on a monthly basis, so if you happen to fall into that category, the sooner you pay, the less expensive it's going to be. And you can contact Wayne County Treasurer's Office at 313-224-5990 for more information on any delinquent taxes. And, uh, and that's it from the, well, then I have, on the DPS Commission, our next meeting is, our April meeting, which would have been tomorrow, has been canceled. So our next scheduled meeting is, uh, May 10th, and those are held on the second Tuesday of the month. And the Rec Commission, their next meeting is May 5th, held on the first Thursday of the month. And just a reminder to everybody that Island Fest is scheduled for June 3rd through the 5th. Also, two other quick notes. The Profile Magazine, that comes out twice a year, has been promised by the publisher to be out by the end of, end of April. I'm going to go with the first week in May, just to... And the next senior luncheon is May 5th, and you can count, contact the Rec Department for reservations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Trustees' reports. Mr. Jurecki.
Hey, I am a member of the Police Commission. I'm the liaison. So we're in our second round of interviews for a dispatcher. We started out with nine fairly good candidates, and we're down to two. And hopefully we'll select somebody soon. We're in the process of doing background checks and those sorts of things. The Police Department had 885 calls for service in March compared to 723 last year for the same period, and it was up 22%. Officers issued 44 citations, including an arrest of an individual for operating while intoxicated, third time around. And, um, see, the deer call is, has been completed. It was probably the most successful call we've ever had with 247 deer. And finally, uh, the next Police Commission meeting is Tuesday, April 19th. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Joe.
Good evening. I sit on the Airport Commerce Park Commission, and the meetings are usually 3rd Monday of the month, 6 o'clock in this room, and I have no report, Mr. Supervisor.
You, Jameson.
Good evening. I sit on the Zoning Board of Appeals, which currently does not have a meeting scheduled. So I have nothing further to report.
Mr. Bletcher. Did you hear those last two people?
I have more to do.
Go ahead, Carl.
Thank you. I have the privilege of sitting on two commissions. The first is Greenway's Open Space. We had our first meeting with Bill Stevenson as the chair, as you know, took over from Cliff St. Pierre. We have scheduled tendatively a Dump the Junk for May. The date will be determined, but there have been some questions out there. Are we going to do it this year? And the answer is absolutely yes, and possibly a second one in the fall. Regarding Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, we have decided that we are going to meet every other month on the third Thursday, and we are looking forward to having a response from the Ralph Wilson Fund regarding the application for a grant that we did. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Carl. Mr. Sordi, do you have anything tonight? Nothing? Okay. Derek.
Good evening, Supervisor and Board members. Just a couple items. I wanted to thank the Board for the opportunity under discussion to have a conversation about the water bill issue, the leak report. That was actually something I was going to update the Board a little bit on this evening, so we'll address that during the discussion portion of the agenda. Just two other items. I wanted to personally thank both Bill Barron and Gary Jones. We had received a complaint about some issues with the flagpole up at the, uh, the Free Bridge, and, uh, Mr. Jones and Mr. Barron took care of those issues over the weekend, so wanted to give them a, a, a quick thanks for doing that. And then last, everybody's mentioned Tony this evening. Same thing that, that I have to say as well. It follows along with what everybody else has said. Tremendous public servant. He's been a friend ever since I hired him at the township in 2006. Has helped me out on a lot of different things and, and definitely has a, a great style in the way that he does his job, knowing what each resident needs and the way to respond to them and, and being, you know, somebody to lean on when, when you need to talk about things, but also understanding enforcement is enforcement, and sometimes you need a little bit more than that. So, um, be sad to see Tony go. He's been an asset to the township and appreciate all of his years of service. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Derek. And I'm sure Tony.
Does Tony get first option on buying that black and white out there?
It's a beauty. It's going to go for a high price, but yes. We can build that into his agreement.
I think that interior is kind of, he's kind of made that interior the way it is.
Personalized, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Derek. I just got a couple of quick comments. We have some commission openings. We have a opening on the Zoning Board of Appeals for an alternate. Island Beautification Committee has four openings, and the Greenways Open Space has one opening. So if you're thinking about wanting to do something positive for the community, those are some commissions committees that you could get involved in. There, for, for those of you who are still, you know, are, are concerned and are still wanting COVID information, there is, uh, a new, uh, there is a government COVID site, covid.gov. And you, it's a, it's a nationwide site, and you can, you can punch in Wayne County and get information as to COVID on Wayne County or any place in the US. So it's, and it's a simple one to remember, covid.gov. So if you are looking for information, that is a good place to go. The other, one other thing I wanted to mention, you may or may not have seen and heard about water bill that, from Highland Park, that the communities in Gleewa are paying for, their overdue bills. I will tell you that, uh, the DCC voted unanimously to, you know, to protest that our communities are paying that. I will have a board resolution at next, at the next meeting indicating that we will withhold our, uh, our pay, the portion of our payment that goes for the Highland Park debt. Other communities have already done that. Gleewa is, uh, understands what's going on, and basically everybody, every, all the parties involved are saying, "State, you, you, you kind of are the ones that set this up. You need to step in here and help us straighten it out because no community has the money to pay off a debt," which I believe is now up around $54 million. So, uh, so I will have a, a resolution basically asking that we, we Groseal withhold our debt payment to Gleewa and put it in escrow until this is straightened out. And that is all I have.
Jim, for the folks at home, Gleewa is?
Great Lakes Water Authority. It's our, it's who we get our water from. Some people get their sewage from it. They, they, yes. Highland Park, I believe, I believe when, when Gleewa took over, I believe the debt owed by Highland Park was around $15 million. It has now grown to $54 million. I, Bill, yeah, 10 years, I'm going to say. I'm not sure. But, but it's a matter of, you know, the, it's a matter of Gleewa's been selling water and sewage to Highland Park, and Highland Park hasn't been paying their bill. And now they, they're writing it off, they, they were writing it off as a bad debt and charging the rest of the communities for that. I believe the increase that we got, uh, this last go-around, half of the increase was because of that debt. So, uh, that, that... I, I do not know. I don't have the figure, Bill. But, uh, that's, you know, that caught everybody's eye, and, and the communities across the, tri-county area are stepping up and saying, "No." So, uh, this is the, this is the step that everybody is taking, and I'm going to ask our Board to do the same. And that is the end of my comments. So we have our, we have a discussion item, and Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. The reason for this, Jim, is I'm not educated on, obviously, what the DPS has or doesn't have, and, uh, being this issue, I was advised that they don't have a system, if you will, that can monitor it and flag. And that's all. I mean, it was just basic, and I thought that I would go tomorrow night, just ask them, "What do you guys have and what do you think of this?" And again, it was canceled, so that's why I'm bringing it up here, so.
Derek, go ahead.
So, we're well, I think everybody's well aware of the post that was on social media about the $7,000 water bill. So I think that's, I think what's bringing this up, and rightfully so. That's a huge water bill, and, and I think there were some concerns that were brought up, um, you know, by the resident relative to the size of it and how this could have happened. So just a little bit of background, if you'll let me start kind of at 101 here. 99.9% of our, our homes in the community have what we call a radio read. So basically, it's a head that sits on top of your water meter, and it transmits a signal out as far as what the, the consumption in that, in that home is on any given basis. What the township does on a monthly basis is drives around the community and pulls these reads from all the different homes, okay? And then that information is brought back to the central office, and a report is generated, and bills are generated off of that information. So that happens monthly. The township does have the ability to be able to generate a, a abnormal use report through our software, which we do. That abnormal use report flags residences that might have an abnormal use, a, a higher than normal or a, a lower than normal, um, you know, use characteristic. And then the township will go out and contact residents if they have a, a very large bill, advise them of what's going on. If you, obviously, are a homeowner here in Groseal, you understand you get bills quarterly, but we read all of the homes on the island on a monthly basis. So at a certain point during your billing cycle, although you might not have a bill being generated, we do flag your property if you have an abnormal usage. The only issue with that is you can consume a lot of water if you have a leak within that month period before we actually do the read and flag you. So there is the opportunity for somebody to generate a large bill or a large amount of consumption within that 30-day period, you know, between the last time you were read and the month that you were read, or the date that you read within that month. So there is the possibility for you to have a lot of consumption and generate a large bill just based upon that frequency. We have over 4,500 homes or accounts within the community, so reading them is a very labor-intensive process, and doing that leak and abnormal use report is a very, you know, large process. So increasing the frequency in which we do those reads would be fairly burdensome on our staff, so I don't know that that's necessarily an option to increase that frequency. Jim, I think you got it. You look like you got a question?
No.
No, okay. All right. So, so that would be a bit of a challenge to, to, to increase that frequency, especially because we only have one billing clerk, and we have three DPW maintenance individuals. And on a regular basis, we might have one off being sick or on vacation, you know, they do have leave time, so at certain points in the year, we might only have two staff members, and they have other responsibilities that they're responsible for. So, um, the other thing that complicates this is we have, um, an aging infrastructure as it relates to these radio read meters. If you, um, had reviewed our DPS budget, you would have seen we would have allocated additional funds towards the replacement of heads. Because the average life of a meter is, or a meter head is about 15 years, and the majority of them within the township were swapped out about 12 to 15 years ago, we're seeing a, a high frequency of turnover as it relates to non-functioning heads. So we've put additional funds aside within the DPS budget to replace those heads, but the reason I bring that up is we do have the, a situation from time to time where, and it was the case in this situation, where the meter head, if it fails and we don't get a read, we actually have to physically go out to the property and either do a reread or enter the home and take a look at what's going on with that meter. So when I say we're, we're reading meters every month and flagging meters every month, you can have one or two that slip through the cracks if the meter is non-functioning, and we actually have to go out there and assess what the problem is. And we average probably between 50 and 60, what we call no reads, on a monthly basis that we have to go out and either swap that head out and do a manual read or something like that. That was the case in this situation. They actually had a no read, I believe, for one month. We had scheduled the swap out of the meter because we didn't get a read. That second read, when it finally came in, you had this huge amount of consumption. What we see a lot of times is these backup sump pumps that are water-fed. That's where we get these immense amounts of usage. As a homeowner, we would advise you, and always do advise you, watch to make sure that those are functioning properly, because they discharge three gallons of municipal water for every gallon of stormwater that they're discharging. And if they're running consistently, you can push a lot of water out into your yard, you know, that can lead to some of these really, really high bills. The only way to really address this completely, to be able to flag you on, you know, a minute's notice if you have a leak, is to go to some sort of cell program and have real-time monitoring of your water usage. And I don't know that that's necessarily a cost-effective option for the township. So I wanted to address, we do have a program. It's on a monthly... It's on a monthly basis. We try to do our best to notify the residents if there is a leak that's occurring at a property when we get those reads. But there are opportunities where, you know, it can slip through the cracks, you know, where we might end up with a large bill. When we have bills like that, we try to work with the resident. If there is an instance where this water didn't go down a sanitary sewer or something and we can give them a break on their sanitary sewer charge, we try to do that. There's other options that we have available and we try to deal with them on a case-by-case basis. Just simply because it's seven thousand dollar water bill, obviously isn't affordable in most household budgets. So we'll try to work with the residents. I spoke with the resident that had posted on Facebook and I'll be speaking with the treasurer about what we might be able to work out with that resident. But those are usually far and few between that we have something of that magnitude. So we deal with them on a case-by-case basis. But I want to let the residents know, we do have a program. We try to do our best to notify the resident if we see abnormal usage. But the program does have its limitations. The best thing for you to do as a resident is to review the usage of your, of your water in your home. Notice if there's any abnormalities. You can go down to your meter and take a look at your meter itself. If you shine your, a flashlight on it, your readings will pop up. Our suggestion is always to turn off all your water in your house and see if that meter is still reading consumption, you know, if you have a leak. You can also call Township Hall and talk to our DPS staff and they can let you know whether or not they're seeing a leak. And if they have to go out and read that meter mid-month, they can do that for you. Also, the meters do have a leak detection system on it where if you flash the, your flashlight on the meter itself, it'll show a faucet that's running. That'll tell you have a leak somewhere in that house. So, you know, we don't want you to consume any water that you don't intend to. But it does take a little bit of participation from a resident to make sure that you're, that you're being proactive with regards to leaks at your home. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of information and background on where we're at with what we have as far as our.
Just to follow up for a couple of questions, Derek, so, okay. When it came to me, I would just say that it was explained to me. And my job as a trustee is to try to provide the best service we can provide for everything. I don't care if it's police, fire, flushing your toilets or picking up your garbage. So when I heard that, or it was explained to me that we did not have a program in place, some type of software, however you want to explain it, we do.
We do.
That's correct, right? We do. Okay, then my question to you isn't, it's, I think it's good of you and Dave if you're gonna work with an individual. But if we put our piece of equipment on something and that piece of equipment fails, then the township, are we more apt to work with an individual as opposed to just watering your lawn all summer long and coming up with a, you know, fifteen hundred dollar water bill because you watered your lawn too much?
Yeah, you know, we always had taken into consideration if there's any kind of township fault or equipment that failed, you know, when we give relief, we, we take that in consideration. Unfortunately, the, the leak detection or the abnormal usage is more of a, a convenience feature that we, we offer. We don't obligate ourselves to, to say that we, we offer this just because we understand that there are challenges and, and ultimately the water that was used is the water that was used in that home. So, you know, we, we try to balance the consumption and the facts of what occurred, you know, against, you know, whether it was an equipment malfunction or was it, was it something that was reasonable or not on the township's end?
Right.
And then balance what we can do for, for them based upon those facts.
So the actual failure, not that I, not that I don't want to provide this resident any relief, but the actual failure was with their backup sump.
Right.
Our meter failure was just what compounded, what prevented us from figuring out they had a.
Well, and the meter didn't, the meter still read the consumption. That's how we had the information. The fact that the radio head was not, not kicking out a report that would show us that there was a leak there, which would allowed us to notify them earlier. Yeah, that compounded.
That's what I meant.
Okay. Bill, the, the amount that the bill was, right?
I certainly feel for the resident. I mean, that's, that's, that's terrible. I would, I would be horrified to open up my water bill and see that kind of dough, so. But it sounds like a couple of ways people can help prevent from finding, prevent themselves from getting in this situation would be to consider not using a water-activated sump or at least inspecting it from time to time.
The backup sump.
Yeah, backup sump.
Yeah, or, or a second pump, sump pump, a physical second sump pump rather than a water backup. And, and I would venture to say these huge water bills like this, sixty, seventy percent of them are associated with the backup, you know, water-fed sump pump.
And then check your own meter, which I guess I'm gonna do when I get home.
Right. And, and we also have dye tablets. One of the biggest causes of leaks are leaky toilets. We have dye tablets you can pick up from Township Hall. You put them in your tank and if the dye shows up in your bowl, you know that you got a leaky valve or something. We see that happen a lot and we'll even notify residents if we see an ongoing leak because our system will show that, whether it's an intermittent or an ongoing leak. We can, on some of the newer meters too, we can actually go back and show you on what day, how much your consumption was. You know, we're on a leak report to show you that information, so. But, you know, we do a lot of the same of what other neighboring communities do. I know one of the other comments was, well, so-and-so informed me or told me that I had a leak. That's something that we regularly do off this leak report. So we're not much different than Trenton, Wyandotte, Woodhaven. You start getting into cell real-time consumption. You also have the argument about, you know, your, you know, privacy of your home and the amount of water you're using and what, what you're using it for and what your consumption history is and whether you're there or not, you know. So you gotta be real careful about some of that because it brings additional concerns in. But at the end of the day, I don't know that we're financially set up to be able to upgrade the system at this point to, to that type of technology quite yet, so.
For, for the number of problems that we have, it sound, it sounds like probably doing what we should be doing.
Yeah, and we try to do our best to, to make sure that the residents are aware if they have a, a situation on their, in their home that's abnormal.
Just, just one quick question. So when you have a variance above normal, at what point do we pick up the phone or contact the resident? I mean, what is the, what is the cutoff?
To tell you the truth, I'm not sure what her order of magnitude is. If it's a twenty-five percent increase or something like that. The leak report, I'm not sure what the parameters are.
It's probably worth visiting.
Yeah, and, and it's actually the BSNA with our utility program actually runs that. So it's, which pretty much everybody uses. So I think that, that they have a cutoff on that. But I think it even generates a report on consistent usage. So it, it might not actually even be an amount. It's just if you, if your valve is constantly open, if the meter is constantly running, nobody has constant usage at their home. So the leak report, I know, will generate you a report on those that are consistent, constant usage at a, at a real basic level, so.
But there's nothing that kicks it out, there's nothing that flags it.
Well, constant usage is one. I'm not sure if there's a spike, if you see a spike or a way, way abnormal amount with that, if it's twenty-five percent over what you normally do or not. I'm not sure what that number is, but there is a number.
Right, okay. So to go something, and I hate to use the word, lack of a better term, fancier product that detects, it's obviously a lot more money and doesn't change a whole lot.
Right, yeah. I mean, if you're gonna go to a real-time consumption like a cell technology or something like that, I mean, the, the costs are gonna be much greater to swap the whole community over. But that's not, not something that we can't look at into the future because it will get to a point where our meters will have to be swapped over, you know, to something new. Or, and, and once that time comes, we'll, DPS will take a look at all that.
And I would think, yeah, in the future, those, those types of things that are, are newer and more expensive now probably will come down because.
Yep, and, and matter of fact, I, I spoke with the resident today and I'll be speaking with the treasurer tomorrow to try to work something out with that resident to try to, you know, address, you know, their situation and handle that with the resident.
Thank you for the explanation, Derek.
You're welcome.
Joe, is that anything else, anybody?
Yes, yes, I, I received some, maybe not bad info, but it wasn't, you know. No, that, that explains it and that, we are doing something. We do have something in place and it can be used and it can be helpful and so I think we're on the right track then for them.
Good, moving, moving right along. Public comment, three minutes on any topic, name and where you live, please. Do we have any, oh, Kathy. Finally, I see her.
Kathy Walker, two-six-zero-five-one Thorcourt. Exception report. You should have an exception report coming off of that BSNA thing. I know my husband was talked to by Lorindo when we had a leak. I know that you can capture that information and do variance and it would, it pop it out. You wouldn't have to do it piece by piece and it sounds like it's only one percent. If you've got fifty or so houses and you've got forty, forty-five hundred, you know, it would not be a big deal. Instead of going one by one, there's gotta be a way of doing it. But that's another story, we can talk about it, but you need an exception report.
My question is, and I'm kind of confused. Was the present, was the notification done about the budget in the newspaper? I didn't understand, is that a yes or a no? The six days or something before the, you vote, you voted on it?
Brian, did you put anything in the paper?
It wasn't done, okay, that's what I was wanting. My question is, because, you know, I haven't been here for twenty-seven years. But for twenty-seven years you said, and you always did it, you brought the, the books up here. People didn't use them for the most part. And you, you had your presentation. When I came to the meeting thinking I was gonna get a book, and I got one tonight, thank you. I didn't know they were downstairs. I didn't know you had a portal. Shame on me, I didn't know that. But what changed this year versus the twenty-seven years? I mean, when you do something all the time, people get kind of used to it. No, but I mean, normally, let's be honest, I'm, I was in finance too. Normally when I'm doing a budget, I don't go on vacation till it's over.
Kathy, Kathy, you wanna face us and?
Yeah, I'm sorry. But, yeah, you don't leave until it's done. And I just couldn't understand why this was a different year and things were done differently. Maybe, you know, maybe you guys announced it. I didn't know that and I would have liked to have looked at it. You know, it's just, and I'm, I'm not the only person. And the thing with the portal, you've got a disproportionate number of senior citizens on the island who are not computer literate, let's be honest. And it's hard for them. And maybe they don't look at it, but at least they have the option to look at it. That's, that's all I'm seeing.
I mean, I can't find it on the portal and I'm a millennial with three computers.
And, and that's it. I mean, and, and the one thing, and this is real quick, about the administrative staff versus the police. No disrespect to administrative people, but you cannot compare the job that the public sees and feels for a policeman versus an administrative person. The loss of that one position will resonate through the community because if anybody dies, God forbid, because they can't get there quick enough. It's not, don't be dismissive about something that's serious because we have so many older people here and all it takes is one bad incident and you'll regret the budget cut. Thank you.
Kevin Flavin, Park Lane, Grozeal, Michigan. Chief Porserelli, may I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Are there currently three police officers on the road answering calls? Chief Porserelli, would you like to make a couple of comments if I throw?
It's your comment, Mr. Flavin, not the board's comment.
When do you answer questions, really? When will you, when will you talk to the public and answer questions? I have a question and here's the, here's the thing. You are defunding the police. The Mr. Bletcher, Mr. Mrs. Ms. O'Connor, Mr. Budney, Mr. Nadyu, you are defunding the police. We used to have twenty-four police officers, we now have less on the road. There are only two police officers on the road answering calls. It takes, if somebody has a heart attack and it takes more than three, four, or five minutes to get there, their chances of survival are sixty percent. The public should know that taking police off the road will kill people. Know that. Know that they are choosing death. How much is a life worth? Eighty thousand dollars less in the budget for the police? One hundred and twenty-four thousand less in the budget for the police? You are setting people up for getting dead. And there is no other way to explain it if you don't look at the five-year plan that talks about how many police need to be on the road to answer calls, whether it's defibrillators, whether it's Narcan, whether it's somebody that needs help being pulled out of the river. You are putting lives at risk by screwing around with the police department and not explaining it to the public why you're doing it other than it costs too much. It really is very sad that the four people that voted, voted on an illegal budget that did not follow the rules and regulations of the state constitution. How, how can you live with yourselves?
Other comments, Bill?
Bill Heil, I live on the East River. I think probably from the comments we've heard, not only tonight, but on other occasions, we can agree that there's challenge that we face. We're talking financial challenge. And I honestly believe that we have to become better equipped for dealing with it than we are. We have to learn and grow and cooperate with each other. We can try to do better with the money that we have. It looks to me from what I heard here tonight that we've done a good job over the years of making up for the drastic drop in tax revenues that we've had. But I think that what we need to do is make sure we're getting every value we can out of our money while providing solid public service. And then for years I've been saying this, I'm, I'm getting bored listening to myself. We need to grow the tax base. And that doesn't necessarily charge the existing resident more money. If you build some more residences, expand the property base. I remember on the north side of West Shore, wait, wait, let's see, the country club. There was an opportunity for thirty-three condos, I think it was, or three homesites. Well, there's, there's an example of what would be there. I've always sung the song about putting a nice apartment center with, with a high-end group of people in it who are retired. We don't have to worry about them having jobs or being near a job. They might have an airplane, they might have a boat, they might golf. And they'd be close to the restaurants for lunch each day. We've got to, in my mind, look at that. We're not the only community that has problems. That's, point has been well documented here, but we can look at the community. We have to decide what we're going to do with issues like, are we going to continue to take the responsibility of fluctuations in the economy on our pensions? Or are we gonna have a defined contribution where we have a known value that we put in and, and the responsibility is shifted for, and adjusted for that? And that's a hard decision, I just meant, and I'm bringing it out as an example, but we have others of like mind. I mean, I'm talking about these structures that might go up, but that's gonna put demand on drainage and sewage. We're gonna have to make sure that capacity is there. It doesn't mean that we have to come up with the money. I've, I've, I've studied this concept. You can pass that on in the cost of the construction. It's been done more times than any of us could remember. But I'm suggesting we've got to look at new ways of doing things, understand how our government functions. To simply talk to Darren Camilleri may be nice, but if there's some committee within the administration of the government that deals with the issue we're talking about and introduction to them and gathering enough information to make an effective presentation helps them convince legislators that what we're talking about is that we've got our act together and we can get something done. And it works. I know it, I've done it personally. But we've got to get our act together. I'm trying to say that the best way I know how.
Thank you, Bill. Other comments, Greg?
Greg Carmison, resident McComb County and homeowner, taxpayer, two-one-two-two-eight East River Road. First of all, starting off on a positive note, commend the board for their vote tonight on the bridge engineer. I think that was a wise, wise decision. I know this, this discussion started back in January of two thousand twenty-one when trustee Jurecki brought this proposal up. And of course, at that time, there was some discussion that, oh, this could cost fifty thousand, a hundred. And of course, at that time, there was some discussion that, oh, this could cost fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars to get, uh, the basic information that we wanted about the, uh, condition of the county bridge and, and its longevity and so forth. And it's, it's, uh, it's interesting to see that once you actually talk to a real engineer, a bridge engineer, and got a proposal, that lo and behold, it came in at twenty-two thousand dollars, which was below trustee Jurecki's estimate in his proposal, which I believe was twenty-five thousand. So you were spot on, uh, trustee Jurecki. Appreciate your leadership on this. Uh, and it's a good thing that we do have this bridge engineer as a resource because there are six bridges right now in this community. They're rated by the Michigan Department of Transportation as having at least one structural component in poor condition. And, and to my knowledge, and all the years that I've been in this community and, and knowing about it from my parents and grandparents, this is the first time that we have ever had six bridges in, rated in poor condition. And that includes the Parkway Bridge that we just had closed for nearly two years. There are five support peers on that bridge that are currently in need of major maintenance. And we need to see a plan from Wayne County as to when that's going to be fixed. And we're still dealing with a, a weight restriction that's, I think, over fifty percent of what the normal, normal rating would be on that bridge. Uh, moving on to another topic, um, trustee Bletcher, uh, you brought up the point that I, in social media, had posted about the, uh, the data on the police and that's absolutely true, I did. And the thirty-seven percent increase in call volume, uh, is not just all recalls, it's also rescue calls. And that graph, if you look at that from the police department, shows a steady rise. And those are first responders and, and the island, as you know from your past work on the police commission, uh, our police are often the first ones on scene. And certainly in my parents' case, when they were in their elderly condition, uh, and needed help a number of times, the police were there before the fire, uh, fire department was. And I think the concern that we've got, that many, many citizens have, is that if you can only put two, uh, two patrol cars on, on the road at all times versus three that you've been done in the past, that is defunding the police. That is reducing the capabilities of the police department and that can translate into very bad consequences. So I, and I realize that there, there is a need for, for budget tightening and, and I'd like to see this, this board create a multi-year financial plan. That was in fact, one of the, uh, the main points in, uh, the Grozeal twenty-twenty campaign. Uh, that, uh, you know, the five of the trustees or the, the current trustees that got elected committed to having a multi-year financial plan. And to this date, I believe that only the police department has a five-year, multi-year financial plan that's in detail. Uh, and we still haven't updated that yet either. Uh, finally, on the budget, uh, you know, I've done some legal research on this and, and I, and I do think there is a question whether the township is, has complied or not. And I'd like to research this some more, but let me just point out that from what I looked at on the township's website on March twenty-eighth in the, the board packet and on the website, I don't see a full budget in detail with all the general ledger line items. And that is, that was, uh, the key to, to having the budget passed in its totality. That's the complete budget. Once you, you have to show those line items to understand what you're voting on. If you're only voting on the summary figures, you're not voting on all the line items. And when it comes time to, if you want to make changes, you need to have a vote on changing line items. And unless you actually pass that budget in its totality, you haven't passed the, uh, the line items. You've only passed the summary totals. And I believe that's what you did on March twenty-eighth. You did not have the, the general, the, the total budget with all its line items detailed. And that wasn't available to the public certainly. You certainly didn't have a note, notification that was made public that the budget was available for inspection for six days prior to that meeting either. And I believe that the township didn't put that, uh, the, the budget with its general ledger, uh, line items on its own website until April fourth. And so, you know, and, and to this date, you haven't actually voted on it. You have not voted on that budget. You voted on a summary of that budget. So the question I think is still open as to whether you did in fact follow the proper procedures. Um, anyways, uh, you know, those are some comments that I have on it. And, and I do think that, you know, we will be looking more, in more detail at the township budget. And I hope that, uh, you know, we can come back to this issue and, and answer questions that do come up. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
I'm going to stay focused on wages, manpower. Oh, I'm sorry, Bob Z, blah, blah, excuse me. Wages, cost and manpower. And I am no way up here to challenge any of Annie's numbers. She did what she had to do, she balanced the budget. And when you take and focus on the first item, which is the wages, which Mr. Jurecki had commented, how we took eighty thousand dollars out last time. We took another twenty thousand out this time. If I was to take the original number of four million twenty-nine thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty and subtract that nineteen thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-nine, it brings me down to four million ten eleven. If I divide that figure by the six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, it gives me five-point-eight-seven-one mils, which is exactly where Anne had to be to balance the budget. And she did. When we talk about, yes, we have won the safest community in Michigan award. It was done by that man sitting over there eight out of ten years. But we also have to stay focused on that first responder. We're down to twenty-three. We were at twenty-four. So instead of having twelve on the road, we only got eleven. We need twelve-point-six to keep three cars per shift on the road. My concern here is that first responder is there with the Narcan, as Mr. Flavin said, the defibrillator, all the necessary equipment. We have a volunteer fire department here in this community. That first responder is so very important. That wagon can't get there, that rescue wagon is not going to get there as fast as that police officer can. That first responder count, we have to maintain. My concern here is if we continue to balance out by taking money out of the wages of the department, very well next year, we could be looking at possibly losing another police officer. And that is a resident, that is my concern. We do need money, there's no doubt about it. The police department needs more money. It was in the five-year plan, it was projected, it's no big secret. So if short-term, we could come up with some money to get that twenty-fourth officer on there, that'd be fine. Long-term, if we have to do and get the money by other means, then we're just going to have to do it. But my concern is if we continue with this process, next year, we could be looking at going from twenty-three to twenty-two. And I certainly don't want to see that happen. Thank you.
If anybody has any comments or questions on what I said before I sit down? Anyone else? What's that?
Brian has.
Oh, see, I, yep.
Question.
You're going to have to move out. Yes, I, I believe we have a couple.
I know you're not going to answer it, but, um, yes, I have a few, um, emails I received. Uh, I'll start with one text message I received from, um, our permit coordinator, Lori Zalusky, who just wanted to say congratulations to Tony on his retirement. Next up, um, Andrew Johnson, eight-eight-nine-two-Sarah Lane. Um, he has a three-part, um, number one, update on patching schedule. Number two, update on Meridian Road Bridge closure over Thurofair Canal, timing and detour detail. Number three, I noticed there are orange bridge close signs up again with empty slots for date closures. Is that a sign that the county bridge is going to be closed again, either short-term or long-term? Um, next up, Mark Lane, two-six-zero-three-eight Thorpe Court. My question is, why wasn't the license plate reader reinstalled when the bridge reopened in December of two thousand twenty-one? Why was it not a priority? What is the status of when it will be up and running again? And the last one I have is from Michael Uchuck, uh, two-three-four-six-three West River. And he says, where's the section in the budget for payoffs, bribes and kickbacks? And that is all I have.
All right. Can you get, uh, get me the, the, well, get me all three. I'll, I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to give them, uh, give everybody, including Mike.
This might be the most entertaining part of the meeting at this point.
Uh, an answer, uh, but, uh, thank you, thank you, Brian. Nobody else out there?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you. Thank you.